Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session for the Volusia County School Board. Today is Tuesday, September 14th. It's three o'clock. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please, everyone, silence your phones. I'd like to welcome everyone once again, for those who are in our audience, our guests, ABM. Thank you for coming this afternoon, as well as those who are online. I'd like to introduce our deists. To my left is Mr. Carl Persis, representing District Four. To his right is Representative Mr. Ruben Cologne from District Five. Yes, thank you. Trying to keep all this from memory. It's good brain training. And then Mr. Ted Doran is our school board attorney, who sits next to his right. To my far right is our agency clerk, Ms. Erin Leebin. To her left is Ms. Anita Burnett, representing District Two. To her left is our vice chair, Ms. Jamie Haynes, representing District One. To her left is our dear superintendent, Dr. Scott Fritz. And I'm Linda Cuthbert, representing District Three, and I'm your chair for this afternoon. So we have one item on our agenda. It is 2.01, ABM Custodial and Grounds Update. Dr. Fritz.
Thank you, Board. You know, since the very beginning, when you brought me on in 2019, we've talked about the importance of having clean schools. And I've been able to meet with each one of you and have conversations about the schools in your area. We have taken some great steps moving forward. Dr. Shanoff and Mr. Kraft are here today. Today is, we're going to bring our partners up in the Custodial Services, ABM. We're going to have a presentation to kind of talk about where we're at. And then either district staff, as well as ABM staff, are here to address any questions or concerns that you have. So, Dr. Shanoff, Mr. Kraft, and Brandon Clark.
Chair Cuthbert, Board members, Dr. Fritz, thank you very much for this opportunity. Before we begin with our presentation, I do want to introduce our folks from Custodial Services that are here today. Celeste Gilmore is here. She works with me in the front of Olson. She's the face of Olson. She does a phenomenal job. I also want to recognize Chris Evans, who is our Custodial Inspector on the east side of town. Jason Strokia, who is our Custodial Inspector on the west side. Eddie Malave, who you've met before. He is our Custodial Supervisor for our pilot schools. And then, of course, we have our partners from ABM, Brandon Clark, Todd Hoover, Kristy Sampson, and Mark Kinsey. So, before we begin, I do want to just provide a little bit of background. Volusia County Schools entered into a contract with ABM. Actually, it wasn't ABM at the time. It was, I believe it was Aramark at the time. The contract has changed hands a couple of times since its inception. Contract was originally written as, yes, a performance-based contract, but also as a cost-savings measure. And so, the idea was that we would receive some financial relief during a very difficult financial time in the state if we outsourced our custodial. So, that's how all of this came to be. There was a five-year re-up, and then subsequently, in 2018, there was another five-year re-up. Each of you has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, as well as specific information related to your district. So I wanted to take you through some of the aggregated content. This presentation aligns to the following goals, as part of the strategic plan. Goal Three, Safe and Supportive Environment. Goal Four, Resources and Operational Processes. And it even touches Goal Five, Communication and Community Engagement. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kraft, our Coordinator of Custodial Services and Grounds Maintenance, to take us through just some of the basics of the contract. The contract in and of itself is quite lengthy. We wanted to just pull out the most salient points that will be germane to our presentation today. Mr. Kraft?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Can you bring him closer?
Good afternoon, everyone. So the contract, again, was written in 2013 during a difficult time with the school district. And so what we have is, it was originally written and accepted to Aramark, and then it was bought out by GCA, and then GCA was absorbed, purchased by ABM, our current contract. So like Dr. Shanoff alluded, we have approximately a year, eight tenths, or almost two years, just shy. Next slide. So the contract is a performance-based contract. It's based on the overall percentage of passing the inspections and how that's perceived by the inspectors. In the contract, there's also a communication paragraph that says that they must establish some type of methodology for customers to base their concerns. And they have established what's called the Concern Log, and that is on the V-Portal that every district employee has access to. And they can fill that out with their concerns when they're not being addressed. And then ABM receives that email, as I think all of you also do, and then that's reacted to normally in that same day. For emergencies, that follow-up paragraph, we have a great communication piece with ABM where after hours and weekends, the custodians are normally the first to find discrepancies at the schools. Water leaks, they do communicate very effectively with myself. They also can go to security, and then they can also reach out to the AOC, the Administrator, on call. Next slide. Oh, emergencies continue. Okay. Next. Slide four. So, this current year, every year, the contractor is eligible to request a CPI increase. And just for the record, I am not licensed contracting, but I've received a lot of training, and I'm just going over some of the terminology that I'm aware of. So this year, they elected not to request a CPI. The previous year, they did, and several years before that, they did not. So we've had one CPI increase since I'm aware over the last several years. The modifications are ran through our purchasing department. Brian Clem is the contract administrator for the district, and then he sends it to the board for approval, and then they're implemented. We also make contract adjustments throughout the year as we build new schools, enlarge schools, or we take down old schools. And each time, you'll see those come forward for board approval and acceptance, mainly when there's a price increase to the contract. So recently, we adjusted for Deltona, Osceola, and George Marks. Those were the three reasons. Any questions on those?
Okay. So, let's move on to what the cleanliness requirements are. So, we have talked a lot about APA Level 2. APA Level 2 is American Physical Plant Administrators. That is considered the standard for establishing levels of cleanliness in physical plants across the United States. So, APA Level 2 is generally considered the level where schools and office buildings should be. What does APA Level 2 cleanliness requirements mean? Floors and base molding shine and/or bright and clean. There's no buildup in corners or along the walls, but there can be up to two days' worth of dirt, dust, stains, or streaks. All vertical and horizontal surfaces are clean, but marks, dust, smudges, and fingerprints are noticeable with close observation. Washroom and shower tile and fixtures gleam and are odor-free. Supplies are adequate. Trash containers and pencil sharpeners are empty, clean, and odor-free. These characteristics were pulled directly from the APA website. So when we look at how that corresponds to our cleanliness concern log, I wanted to create a crosswalk for you where you could see which APA Level 2 requirement matches the corresponding cleanliness concern. So then, when you start digging deeper into some of the cleanliness concerns that we see come across our email, you know which corresponding APA Level 2 area it applies to. In some cases, we have cleanliness concerns that are entered for which there are multiple entries, and there are multiple concerns related to different bullets. So we actually use two metrics for capturing custodial performance. We use the Custodial Cleanliness Concern Log, and again, as Mr. Kraft indicated, that's available to anybody via the V-Portal, including pilot schools. They have their own cleanliness concern log. The custodial inspections also take place. VCS employs two custodial inspectors that you met, and each serves a geographic side of the county. They will inspect a building once a quarter, and they will use the Smart Inspect software, and usually those inspections take three to four hours to complete because it is every corner of every room. These are very thorough inspections. Custodial inspection reports are issued same day by the inspector to John Kraft. The failure of an inspection triggers a performance assessment report from Mr. Kraft to ABM leadership. With the failed inspection results attached, ABM has provided 10 calendar days to correct the deficiencies per the contract before the district can invoke the contract provision that allows the district to seek outside relief for remedying repeated concerns named in the follow-up inspection report. Let's talk a little bit about the cleanliness concern log data that we have seen. So through this point last year, through the 57 sites, just the 57 sites that ABM still maintains, there were 80 instances where there was a cleanliness concern related to floors and carpet not clean. This year, there are 148. When we look at the aggregated amount for the entire school year, that is our first column. So as you look at this particular slide, you can see that we're talking about, from column one, we're looking at all of last year, all 73 sites. Column two, data last year for the 57 sites that ABM serviced last year and this year. And then, ABM data for this year thus far through September 3rd. Here is the cleanliness concern communication circle. So the VCS employee enters the concern via the V-Portal. The concern generates a, the concern is generated, and a workflow pushes out an email message out to the stakeholder groups, including the board members. ABM coordinates response between area manager and the day porter. The county is broken up into different areas, so Brandon and Mark work directly with managers that oversee smaller groups of schools, usually in the neighborhood of eight sites. The COO office sends a follow-up email to the ABM area manager confirming receipt of email, and the ABM area manager confirms completion by closing out the open request. Sometimes, we'll email the originator of the concern to confirm resolution. We've seen this practice with a couple of our ABM area managers, but not all ABM area managers. Here are inspection protocols. All rooms, grounds, and common areas are inspected, and two reports are generated: indoor spaces, which are part of the Custodial Services Inspection Report, and then the outdoor spaces, including sidewalks, courtyards, curb areas. Custodial inspections require 85% of all APA Level 2 criteria to be met, and grounds inspections require 85% of all grounds criteria to be met. Here's where we are right now, actually September 3rd, relative to custodial inspections, and where we were last year with our custodial inspections. As you can see with our custodial inspections, we see that we've only completed 22, but of course, that's to be expected only two or three weeks into the school year. The inspection average score has dropped by about 4% on our custodial inspections, and we have issued eight pars, which is about 25% of the failed inspections that we had all last year. Grounds inspections, we had, we've had 22 completed grounds inspections, because grounds inspections take place at the same time custodial inspections do. We've seen a decrease in the inspection average score from 90 to 87, and we've issued four Performance Action Reports, which means failed inspections so far, and they had six, ABM had six, all of last year. You have copies of the inspection report in your handout. There is a general inspection report that we've placed on the PowerPoint. However, you have all of the inspection reports that have been completed for your schools and your areas to this point. We also wanted to task our principals a little bit and ask for their feedback relative to how they believe it's going so far this year. So we asked them several questions, and I pulled out the most salient questions, the ones that are most germane to our discussion today. "In general, the quality of cleanliness in my school building is?" 51% said about the same. 39.5% said worse than last year. 9.3% said better than last year. In general, are ABM cleanliness concerns followed up within 24 hours? We see that 34.9% agree, 16.3 strongly agree, 34.9 disagree, and 7% strongly disagree. On average, how much time is spent interacting with your teachers regarding custodial concerns? Most said 15 minutes a day or less. When asked to provide the one or two biggest custodial concerns on their campus, 81% of respondents indicated adequate staffing. 53% said it was floors or carpeting. 53% said wiping student desks. 48% said restrooms clean. These were the top four answers. Principals were given the opportunity to select all that apply from a menu, and these were by far the highest ones. Principals named specific ABM custodians for doing an outstanding job. It's very clear that our principals have very strong relationships and great relationships with their day porters. The ones that are there during the day are doing phenomenal work according to our principals. There are good working relationships between the ABM employees and their school leadership. 41 out of 43 actually singled out a stellar ABM employee. They did express frustration in providing outstanding support with more help. They want their day porters helped. And 18 out of 43 schools requested a walk with ABM leadership, so we have provided that to Mr. Clark. Have we provided that to Mr. Clark?
Yeah.
Okay, you've got it. So Mr. Clark and ABM's leadership will have that before they leave, so they can follow up. At this time, we're ready to hear any questions, and if, once we're done answering any questions that you may have, we can bring Mr. Clark forward to answer questions on behalf of ABM.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. So, Dr. Shanoff, I appreciated that you emailed this, you know, ahead of time so that we could take a look at it. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that when they're going to do an inspection, they're doing the building and the grounds at the same time?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I've got some discrepancies in the data that I received because I have a grounds report for Blue Lake, but I don't have a building report for Blue Lake. And I double-checked in what you printed to make sure, so I'm missing that.
Okay.
And then, DAC is included always in my area also. I have a grounds report for them, but also not a building report. So those are the two discrepancies I had. And then, if I understood you correctly, all of the schools that I don't have any reports for yet, there's not been an inspection for them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And how long do we approximately think it's going to take before we're able, before the gentlemen are able to do the other inspections?
So because the inspections take three to four hours to complete, and in some cases, we've actually had to go back because we've had a significant number of increases in pars, the reinspections have become contractually necessary for us to complete. So, because we've seen an uptick in that, it does require them to go back and look and re-inspect a particular site again. So we do intend to remain on our schedule of inspecting schools once a quarter. That hasn't changed, so, and our inspectors are committed to that. They still feel like they can meet that timeline.
So in the past, I did go out and do some inspections with the inspectors, like I met them and did the inspections. So can someone explain to me, is there any difference in the way that inspections are being conducted this year versus how they were conducted in the past, or is it still similar?
So it's the exact same way. We have the exact same inspectors. We're using the exact same software.
Okay. All right. So I have 10 facilities still left, but by the end of the first nine weeks, those remaining 10 should be inspected.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cuthbert, that's all that I had.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Cologne.
So in our schools that were part of the pilot, have we experienced challenges as far as staffing goes, similar to what I've had conversations with ABM as well?
It's hard to hear. You're asking if the staffing challenges are the same?
Sorry, have we experienced staffing challenges as well?
Yes.
We have.
Yes.
And so what percentage, so how many vacancies do we still have in our pilot right now that are not filled?
The 10 ancillary positions have not been filled yet, and my best recollection is we have two vacancies at schools, so that would put us about at 92 or 93% staffed.
I guess my question really is probably for Jason. I want to talk about Deltona High. Deltona High has been neglected. It's the only word I have to talk about it. I'm trying to be nice. When you look at the Microsoft, at the daily report to month, I think they've had close to 90 complaints already when we've been in school for four weeks. The garbage isn't being picked up. The desks aren't being cleaned. So, the last inspection was 77.2, which is only second to New Smyrna Middle School. So, Ms. Cuthbert, I'm sorry about that. This is sad, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here because we all agree, and I was on a call with Mr. Clark the other day, and he also agrees. But my question then becomes, and I'll turn to Ted or whoever whenever the right time is, at what point do we start holding them accountable financially for not meeting the needs of the contract? Because right now, where we are, and I understand that it's hard to get employees, but that really is not our business when the schools are not being cleaned. I mean, we're talking 90 in four weeks. If you think about the amount of time it takes a teacher to put in one of these, I mean, multiply that times how many, and then think of the ones that didn't put it in. So, we have a problem. And I think that that's being echoed. I mean, you look at this inspection, you know, we know that our principals want to keep a good working relationship with the folks they have to see every day, so they're usually a lot kinder in order not to create those waves. So, you know, my point is that the reality is that things are worse than we think they are, I think. And, you know, I said to Dr. Fritz, you know, we, if we can, and I don't know budget-wise, but if we can, at some point, we're going to have to, we're not going to have a choice because right now, it's not happening. I can tell you, the garbage at Deltona High does not get picked up. I mean, every single day, I'm getting tickets. And last year, Deltona High, I can't think of maybe one ticket all year long, one or two. Mind you, if I'm correct, their day porter went to, became employed, and so he went to Deland Middle.
Yes, sir.
And so he's doing a great job at Deland Middle, but that still doesn't take away their contractual obligation to ensure that our schools are clean, especially now. And so, that's all I have. I mean, Brandon and I, I mean, we had a meeting with Brandon, and, you know, he was very forthcoming about it, but I think contractually, we have an issue, and I don't know, I've expressed it, we've talked about it, and I know that. Ted and the team has some pending meetings, and I'm okay with waiting for that resolution, but we have a problem, guys. Big problem, and it's bigger than it was last year. This is bad, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Persis.
Mr. President, here. I would just say that it's one of the toughest things to do.
In this, in our school system, I just said that it's one of the toughest challenges to keep schools clean, to keep classrooms clean. You're dealing with a lot of customers out there, and you're dealing with children that, you know, just thousands of children going in these classrooms every day. I mean, people don't understand the wear and tear until you're in a school. As a principal, I could just see it. I mean, it just like, sometimes after school, I'd go into these classrooms and it looked like a bomb exploded, and I think, oh, that poor, poor custodian has to go in there and try to clean this up, and then only to shudder, the next day, the same bomb went off again. I mean, it's not, it's not fun. Cleaning those bathrooms, you would never want to do it. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So it's no surprise to me that we don't have a line out the door of applicants begging to get a job in this, in this kind of work. So whether it's ABM or Volusia County School District's doing it, it's going to be a challenge. Why do we have 14 vacancies under our pilot program? So it's not as if, all right, well, let's get rid of ABM, and we'll just take it on. We can take it on. There aren't the people out there that will do this work. I think what we need to be doing is to just figure out where those schools are, like Mr. Cologne said, Deltona High, New Smyrna Beach Middle, wherever the other ones are. And there aren't that many that are in the 70 range. But we don't have the resources, and ABM doesn't either, but we got to figure out a way to get those low, low-performing schools up to, you know, to at least up into the 80s, the 85s. I think that's what would be acceptable. Of course, we all like to be in the 90s, but, you know, I mean, let's be real, we'd be grateful if we could get them up to that, to that point. So, I don't know what the superintendent is thinking along these lines, or what, and what your recommendations are going to be, but obviously, we can't stay maybe... maybe with the same operation that we currently have at those low, low-performing, low-performing schools. And at the same time, Madam Chair, I gotta say, I'm real, real happy with, you know, some of the scores that we have out there with ABM as well as with our, with our pilot program. I think we've seen some real improvement. But I've seen real improvement, like, for instance, Ormond Beach Middle School with ABM. I remember last, last year, I used to get complaints all the time. And I'm not getting them this year. Look at Palm, Palm Terrace, how, how, what that, what that score is. And on the other hand, Tamoka Elementary, I think, led the, led the pack last, last year. Jamie used to tell me that all the time. But, you know, they're doing, they're doing great this year. So I see successes in both our pilot as well as ABM. And, but I certainly can, can concur again with what Mr. Cologne said. And I know, I'm sure that's how Ms. Cuthbert feels about the schools in her area. So I'm grateful for, for this because this gives us a snapshot. And that's all it is, really, kind of a snapshot of where we are on September the fourteenth. Yes?
Yeah. If I could just respond to that and, and your ask regarding where we go from here. We do need to be very strategic about where we move from here, given, given some of the constraints that we have. Obviously, you know, Volusia County isn't the only county in the country that's, that's a little bit stressed by a labor crunch. So what we need to do, though, is we need to be strategic and responsive to the, to the schools and the specific issues within those schools that impede the teacher's ability to learn and the student's ability, excuse me, teach, and then the student's ability to learn in, in a safe environment and, and a healthy environment. That's what we want to do. And so we believe that we need to be strategic about how that happens. I appreciate you pointing out that there are some bright spots out there. There are. We do see some schools where, and let me tell you, anytime an inspection comes in over ninety, I don't care where it's coming from, I'm cheering. I'm cheering. And because I know that that means that kids are learning in a great environment and a clean environment, and teachers are teaching in that environment. So we love that. So you're right. We've got Hinson that's doing quite well. Palm Terrace, you know, his response on the, on the, on the survey was, everything is great. I'm very happy. We want every other school to be that way. You know? I want the Wolves to be walking through their campus not having to stare at trash. Because as a high school, a former high school principal, I know what that's like. It's very, very tough to maintain a very positive climate on campus if you see the trash. So with that, we do need to be strategic. And so I intend to use some of my school-based experience to look at where exactly are our biggest areas and how we can fix that and work with the school administrators and ABM to make that happen and make it happen quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So kind of, they've already hit most of these points, but I, I know on the reports that I receive, South Daytona Elementary is really getting hit hard. I don't know if there's consistent staff there. By all means, I'm, I understand the staffing issue that we're all seeing. And then the Horizon and Atlantic are my other schools that are, that are reporting most of the other issues. But really, what we need to do is, what is our solution going to be to get this fixed? Because ultimately, our goal is, like you mentioned, is to come together and work so that the kids have a clean learning environment. And so we need to, to not worry about where the blame goes, but how do we solve the problem? And, and I think we need to get our heads together and figure that out. And I know that you all had a meeting that maybe got postponed, or I'd be interested to know when that's going to be rescheduled and, and what our resolutions are going to be. Because like Mr. Cologne said, we do have to hold everybody accountable. But I think we're all sensitive to the fact that, that there is staffing issues here in Volusia County. And what can we do to, to encourage people to make sure that they're being held accountable to do their job?
Without a doubt. And you and I have, you've mentioned South Daytona to me. And we've been out there a couple of times looking specifically at that campus and what needs to be remediated on that campus with Mr. Bronson. We have, we have definitely seen, especially, we've seen, especially at Atlantic, situation where we have a day porter that does an outstanding job and ends up doing a lot of the work over the course of the day that he knows that maybe somebody at the night may not do, or he's concerned that somebody may not come and ends up doing it. And you, again, perfect example of school administration singling out an individual who goes above and beyond to take care of that school. And it's, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's melancholy to, to think that, you know, this is how we kind of figure out where our, where our best are. But in this particular case, we do have some stars that are working across the county within ABM that are really doing everything within their power, in some cases to do two people's jobs, three people's jobs. Because, again, we're worried, they're worried that there may not necessarily be that person coming behind them. So with that, you know, we'll, we'll continue, we'll continue to work towards finding that solution that will meet the needs of the aggregated school scores that are significantly lower than the rest, fixing those schools, and then going back and trying to find the high-yield remediation pieces among our other schools that may even just be barely passing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Burnett, Ms. Haynes, if you don't mind, before we go to a second time, I'd like to say something if I could. So I will do that. Is the, does ABM have a reward system in place for those stellar employees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Is it name recognition or is it a financial reward?
So I would prefer ABM to answer the specifics because they have multiple levels with multiple yields.
Okay. We'll, we'll wait. If, if that's okay, I, we can wait on that one because it might be addressed by other board members. So hang on to that one. Is there any kind of financial addition for student, uh, for, pardon me, for staffing, for ABM staffing to work at night? Sometimes when you have the night shift, it's a little more.
That would be an ABM question as well.
Okay, again, that's, that's another one for ABM when ABM comes up. One thing I've noticed, since we have replaced schools, noticed, and it hit me when Mr. Cologne was talking about Deltona, because when I moved here, Deltona was brand new. Deltona High School, New Smyrna Middle, Spruce Creek Elementary, somewhat South Daytona, little bit of Horizon Elementary. Trying to think of all the schools that I'm thinking of. They're all spread out. They're all buildings with big courtyards and another building and another courtyard and another building. So when, when it's so much money per square foot, we're not including the square footage it takes for them to go from building to building or from the building to the dumpster. There's a lot of trips. And that takes not just energy, but it takes up time. And so I can see how day and night porters don't have the time to finish all of that. So as we go to a new contract or we speak of it, we need to look at the layout of the school as well. Because when Chisholm, before it was rebuilt, it was all spread over. There were a lot of problems. But now that it's concentrated in one building that's unified, there aren't as near as many problems as there was before. The same thing I'm sure we'll see with Beachside when Osceola and Ortona are combined. I've seen it, I believe, with George Marx, before George Marx was spread out. And even though George Marx has some wings, it's still, you're not going outside, going from place to place. So are there problems at Enterprise? Because it's, too, it's all spread out, all over the place. So I think that's something we need, we probably need to look at. What can, what solutions do we have for those schools that are all spread all over the place? To help reduce, I mean, put something on wheels or have different water stations or another dumpster on the other side of the campus? Something to help mitigate, you know, the time that's used. When I, it's, ten years ago, I had my last year in the classroom. And so I've spent most of my time in the classroom with our own employees, our own custodial employees. And I remember so many times, they knew that there was a inspection coming up, and if they got under a ninety-two, they were in trouble. And so for us to talk about an eighty, it's, and I know what the contract is. I know it's a level two, and it would be a different price if it was a level one. But I also know that our kindergartners and our pre-K have special needs, and their, their floors need to be picked up because they're on the floors all the time, and they need to be vacuumed. So I think it's, we need to find the incentives and the solutions, much like what Ms. Burnett said, to do this. Because as we continue with this year and with the challenges that we are all facing, there's just so much hand washing can do. We need to have clean spaces. Okay, thank you, Ms. Haynes. Go ahead.
So actually, part of what I want to say, and my questions are for Brandon next. So I don't know if, you know, Dr. Stanoff, if you want to stay there, or Mr. Kraft, either one of you, but if Brandon could come forward. And while Brandon's coming forward, I will say this. I've got University High, which is the newest-built high school. And if you look, I mean, it's at seventy-nine point five zero percent. So yes, it's slightly above Deltona High, but I mean, it's an entirely different, you know, ballgame. It's, yeah, because Deltona High is, you know, granted, over the years, they've either had the buildings labeled in letters or they've had them labeled in numbers or whatever. But here we take our newest high school, which is not as spread out. I mean, because Deland High, face it, I mean, I, I put Deland High in the pilot simply because I thought if we could do Deland High and do it correctly, then we could do any other school. Because Deland High is the most hodgepodge of buildings and spread out all over the place. Because, I mean, it still has some of the buildings, I think, from back in the nineteen-seventies sitting at Deland High because it's just so spread out. But we take University High. It was built with a design that, in my opinion, should be really easy because you've got a center courtyard with everything circling around that to be able to clean. I mean, it was a toss-up for me last year when I looked at tickets between University and Deland High. They were both, you know, running neck and neck. And like I said, I chose Deland High for the pilot because I thought if we can hire a team and they can clean Deland High, they can clean anything. So my question to you, to start with Brandon, is this. Did you cut back on hours this summer?
As a matter of fact, yes, we did. That's an operational model that we followed since the inception of the contract. Although this year, we did handle it a little differently because we weren't doing the, the cut over with, with the school district on the pilot. We only ran that reduction, I think, for five, the last five weeks of the summer as opposed to the full ten-week summer timeframe.
Okay, question number two. On the fifteen schools that were moving to the pilot, and they weren't moving to the pilot, my understanding was until July first.
That's correct.
Did you stop or slow down when school let out on cleaning those fifteen schools because you kind of felt, and granted, I maybe shouldn't say this because I'm putting words in your mouth, that, well, they weren't going to belong to you anyways? So did you step back on what needed to be done for the month of June at those fifteen schools?
Yeah, absolutely not. That is an integrity issue. You know, I would never do that, knowing that my, my mother, rest in peace, would be looking down upon us. We did submit the summer plans for those fifteen sites to the school district with very specific items that we were going to address. And we did report our completion, our percentage completion against those tasks all the way through July one. So wholeheartedly, we did not back at all at any of those locations at all.
Okay, but you did step back and cut some hours during the summer, as you stated first.
That happened after the cut over on the pilot program. So none of those, that reduction did not happen till after the cut over was done. So it didn't, it didn't impact any of those fifteen sites.
So let's just talk about University High for a moment. Because I think University and Deltona High and, and granted, New Smyrna Beach Middle, they all three belong to you. Their scores are low. They're sitting in three different areas, three different designs. What, because University High was a problem last year. What is the problem at University High? Like, why can't we take the newest high school in Volusia County and keep it clean? Like, why can't we empty the trash? I mean, when I get a ticket on Monday morning that says the lunch trash from Friday is still out in the trash cans in the courtyard, do you know, I mean, do you know what that smells like from Friday in this heat till Monday morning? So help me understand what the problem is at University High.
Yeah, so specific to University, Deltona High, and, and, you know, really the top twelve sites on the teacher concern logs. But it's really district-wide. And I'm not, I'm not saying this is an excuse, but the reality of it is, is that we're, we average about fifty-five vacancies a day. So, you know, we're in the business where we have to have people to be able to, to clean those schools. I know we had met with Mr. Cologne on several occasions. You know, Deltona High, we're only thirty-three percent staffed. We're trying to offer an incentive for individuals to actually work at, at that location and are still having major challenges and struggles with getting individuals that want to work. You know, we've done several things. I mean, I can get into that. But to very pointedly answer your question, and I think the comment was made, ABM is successful when we're staffed. And we saw that two years ago when we had zero, zero failed inspections for an entire year. That's when we were probably averaging five to ten vacancies on average. Right now, the fifty-five, it's not, it's not sustainable. And I do, you know, I do appreciate the comments from Ms. Cuthburg as well as Ms. Burnett. I think we're in a position, especially with the market and the way that it is, and just the, the level of competition and competitiveness that's out there. And knowing that we inherited an air mark contract, right? I think we need to come together as, as a team and find a solution, a win-win solution for everybody based on this market and the way things are working right now.
So one of the questions that I proposed many times last year and on one of the most recent tickets, and, you know, Mrs. Chenoweth wrote to you even about it. You had three people at University High in a group, like just walking together in a group, collecting trash. Not separate, not working on, and, and I talked to you about this last year, about where's the training piece? Where's the expectation piece? And are you and your team out there? Because it, it seems like the day porters for most places are working really hard. And like, they're carrying the bulk of the load as a single individual, which is very difficult for one person to handle all of that with every, because they're, they're busy already with kids on campus. But then the night crew just seems to either not show up or they show up and hang out, and they're not doing the work. So my question to you is, where are you and your team at night? Like, are you out there checking on this group and setting the expectation?
Yeah, so our, our management staff is, you know, really running hard. They're in the position where, you know, when we talk about those fifty-five vacancies, ninety-five percent of those come from the evening. We really don't have a lot of vacancies during, during the daytime. So we have seen an uptick and received the feedback that, you know, our, the day porters are picking up those items that are getting missed in the evenings. Our management staff is out there walking. They're, they're probably averaging fifteen, sixteen-hour days at this particular moment because we do have vacancies that we're trying to cover. And we're trying, we're trying to get as much accomplished with the challenges that we're having right now. That's just, quite frankly, it.
So do you have any solutions on how to overcome the vacancies that you have?
Yeah, so we've actually seen an uptick in applicants. Last week, I think we had eleven candidates that actually cleared fingerprinting, which is the, the final step before we can actually onboard them. It's a substantial increase as opposed to the run rate that we've been seeing over the last six weeks. You know, I could speculate what's, what's driving that, whether, you know, the stimulus getting cut off, people coming. You know, I could speculate what's, what's driving that, whether, you know, stimulus getting cut off, people coming back in the workforce. But what I do know is we did hire a dedicated recruiter. We have a critical care team out of Atlanta, recruiting critical care team. We've also inherited one of those individuals on the critical care team that's working with our recruiter who onboarded with us about four weeks ago, in addition with Mr. Kinsey, who he works recruiting effortlessly. But, so, so we've, we've added those recruiting layers. We've, we've also got Kristi Sampson here, who's in the audience, who has strategically been placed in Florida to be able to provide the support that we need and that direct line communication to our president of education, Valerie Berg, who I actually spoke to today. So we've, we've got a lot of things that, that are in play right now. We have a job fair tomorrow at the Volusia Mall. I believe the school district is going to be there as well. We did have a job fair, in all honesty, about four weeks ago. It was a day and a half worth of job fair. One on the east side of the county, one on the west side of the county. So out of a total of 12 hours, we had two applicants show up. One applicant didn't pass a background check. So that's just, just to give you some kind of perspective of the challenges that we're facing. And to be, in, in complete, you know, honesty with you, Jamie, I, I don't believe that we're competitive in this marketplace. I think that the contract that was inherited and inherently written by airmark, it's not conducive to, to the market right now. And I, and that's why I say, and I really appreciate the, the comments about, I think we have to come together as a team, Dr. Chanoff, and us to really look at what that looks like, right? And in all honesty, I think we need to revamp the contract. We need to revamp the contract well before 2023. That, that's my personal opinion. I think we need to sincerely come in and look at that well within the next six months and become more competitive in the marketplace. Because I, I honestly don't see this, it's not going to go backwards. Once you, once you increase wages for individuals or the expectation that, that they're receiving, they're, they're not going to want to go backwards. And we're just simply not competitive right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Burnett?
I just had a question, Mr. Clark. Going back to the five weeks that you did reduce staff over the summer, did you take into consideration where the, the summer school programs were going to be when you did that? Because I know I still got plenty of tickets for South Daytona Elementary, which was running a summer school program.
Yeah, the, the reduction in hours, it was kind of a wash because when we do a reduction in hours, we had so many vacancies that we were giving those hours back to those individuals whose hours were reduced just to be able to provide the, the reduction level, if that makes sense. So, I mean, this year was unique compared to previous years. And again, you know, that operational model or the reason or the decisions behind the reduction in hours is, as like Dr. Chanoff said, the contract was written very specifically for a very, you know, specific reason 10, 11 years ago, was it? And that was a cost-saving measure. And, you know, the mentality in this business is low bid wins, and low bid does not give you the level of service that you are, that we want. I mean, just you, you get low bid, you're going to get lower performance typically. So that, you know, that's why I say that we really need to come together. We need to revamp this contract because it's, quite frankly, a horrible contract for the time we're in right now.
Well, and, and to that point, when we, when we do discuss the fact of revamping the contract to what the needs are these days, I think that it's important that we don't lower our expectations for what our needs are to make that fit. I think we need to keep our expectations elevated. I mean, we are, we do need to keep the rooms clean.
Yes, your expectations are, and I don't mean this disrespect, disrespectfully, lower than probably our expectations. We want to see a 90th percentile and above. Because we, prior to pre-COVID, when you look at the historical data, you know, when I, when we came in here, or I came in here five, six years ago, we were in the 70th percentile. And for the next three consecutive years, we were in the 90th percentile, and then it's dramatically dropped off, obviously, because of COVID. So, and our managers have that same mindset. They don't want anything lower than 90%. We just can't execute without having people. We have to have people to, to clean the schools. We're, we're running so much overtime, and, you know, overtime only goes so far because you burn, you're burning people out. And at some point, you're, you're not productive anymore, right? You're not productive. This is a, this is a people-labor-driven business. We're not competitive. And based on the contract right now, we really need to come together as a group to relook at that and revamp that and see what that's going to look like. To not, one, get us to the level that we need to, but to get ahead of the curve. To get ahead of the curve because we know there's going to be more market drivers that are coming down the road. We know, we know, and we know what some of those are.
Thank you.
Yep. Did you want me to answer your questions as you had, Ms. Cuthbert? Okay, so you asked questions about?
Incentives.
Yeah, incentives. So we do an inspection bonus incentive. So any school that scores a 95% or above, they get monetary, which we gross up. So we make sure that when it's, when it's taxed, they don't get those taxes taken out of that grossed-up amount. So we do the inspection bonuses. We do have a retention bonus in place right now for some sites to just incentivize people to, you know, stay with ABM. We also do a game changer award, and that's a pretty special award that I particularly like. So we do send out report cards to the principals. And then the principals actually are automatically linked to what's all a great game changer nomination, and they can nominate somebody. And when they do, we get together as a management staff and select a winner monthly for that. So there's a winner on the east side of the county, a winner on the west side of the county. We'll typically go in during the day. And if it's, you know, a day custoding or something like that, it's pretty cool because, you know, they get everybody in the cafeteria, and the kids scream and applaud and all that fun. So it's a lot of fun. So we do that. And then we actually have a corporate initiative, which is years of service awards and certificates that are sent out to our team members based on their years of service. Yep. And then somebody asked a question about the shift, shift differential for those evening shifts. Typically, no. For a second shift, we have not done a shift differential. One thing that we are trying different specifically to the administration center here is moving to a third shift. There is a shift differential for that third shift that we're trying to fill. But believe it or not, we're having difficulty filling those at even that higher wage rate. Mark informed me yesterday, though, that we believe we have a candidate that will come, is willing to come in and do that third shift to provide that extra level of support for the administration building here. Because, you know, there's some accessibility issues, and we just want to make sure that we get those areas clean. And then when everybody departs, whether they're working later or not, that they're still getting serviced during that third shift time as opposed to custodial leaving at 11:30 at night, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to finish?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a second. I just wanted, before Dr. Fritz concludes, I just wanted to say, we're a public entity. We survive on tax, tax revenues, grants. You're a private company. Private companies have a lot more discretion in what they pay their employees. And I know you're, you're part of a much larger corporation, and you might have that difficulty getting more money for employees. But I just, I just had to say that in defense of our school system, and I understand about revamping a contract. But knowing what, we're struggling also.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think there would be a lot of people with raised eyebrows to put more money into a contract that we haven't seen, and we've seen a reduction in performance. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Because I think that's what a lot of people are thinking. All right. Thank you. I appreciate you coming. Thank you. And Dr. Fritz, would you like to conclude?
Brandon, I know that we were unable to have our meeting, but there are several things that I wanted to address since, because I really do think timing is very important. In, in my world, when we have an area that's struggling, such as a school, and you've heard several mentioned here today, sometimes we give over, over resources. And we, we staff at a higher rate to work with struggling students, to work with teachers. And that's something that we can control at the district. You can control it with your company. If we're having trouble getting employees for Deltona University or New Smyrna Beach, what I wanted to talk to you about at that meeting was that you take the initiative and overstaff those so that when somebody's out or somebody quits, we're not in a hole. And right now, with our pilot program, that's why we have the ancillary positions. Staffing is difficult. It is extremely difficult, and I understand that. But I think, you know, Mr. Cologne brought it up. That's why we went with a contracted service so it really wouldn't be our problem, it would be yours. And so even as I was traveling a few weeks ago, the porters that picked up my bags at the airport were ABM employees. You guys have lots of resources. And I understand that you're, you're the local guy, but I would strongly ask that when we do have this meeting, that targeting those areas and those schools that are failing be overstaffed so that we stop being short-staffed. The other thing, as far as the contract goes, to Ms. Cuthbert's point, there are some areas where we should never have agreed as a district, but we, we could, you could show some good faith. Curb appeal, we, we need it. It's something that I've heard the five board members and every single principal mention to me, that when we walk on campus and we see leaves in the gutters for our parent pickups. It's small. It sure would show some good faith. And so, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. There's, there's no one who is asking any more questions. Dr. Chanoff, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for you and all your staff for coming. I do want to do a shout-out to Matt Musgrove, who usually answers the emails. And it's very nice when teachers say, when they get an answer, when they put in a ticket, a virtual ticket, and he comes on and says, "I'll, I'll contact the day porter and we'll get right to that." That is extremely helpful, and that's something I've enjoyed having. So thanks to Matt Musgrove. So Brandon, if there's anything else you'd like to say?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending our workshop. We will reconvene at 5:30 for our regularly scheduled board meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.